I'd like to call the December the 17th, 2012, Special Meeting of the Frankfurt Board of Commissioners to order. We'd like for each of you to stand now at this time and have the invocation by the Reverend William Harton, who's chaplain of the Frankfurt Police Department. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Let us all pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful for life and the joy of living in this great nation. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings of freedom and the opportunities provided for our lives. We join the multitude, Father, of people who are looking to you for comfort in the wake of the terrible tragedy in Connecticut. Our hearts are torn with grief for those families and this community as they deal with the aftermath of such a brutal and senseless ordeal. We pray, Lord, that thou will give us the knowledge and ability to help prevent this from ever occurring again. Now bless our leaders of our community as they make decisions that vitally affect our lives here. Give unto each one of them the perspective of what is right to do for us. We also ask that you watch over and bless our men and women in the service of our country as they protect us on foreign and soil, and also for those who serve here in our community to give us the peace and safety that we hope that we can have. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus and for His sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, B.C.D. Reverend Harton, thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Mr. May?
Here.
Mayor Graham.
Here. So we have four to five. We've got a big crowd here today. Something big going on. Well, anyway, thank you for being here. And we now have, next item on the agenda is the minutes. We've had the minutes from the November the 19th, 2012 work session, November 26th, 2012 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion regarding the approval of these meetings?
Sir, if Commissioner May, the approval of the second?
Second.
Mr. Haddon, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is ceremony on items. So I'll turn it over to our City Manager and Chief Whitlock.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two recognitions. First, in the Fire Department, Chief Posage, if you'd come up. We're recognizing William Bill Sutton, retiring with 14 years, four months' service as firefighter paramedic. With him's his wife, Carrie.
Thank you, Chief. As Chief City Manager Will Hoyt said, we want to recognize Bill today. He will be leaving us at the end of the month from the Fire Department. He's been a great employee, great paramedic. His plaque reads "An appreciation for your dedication to the citizens of Frankfurt and Franklin County in your 14-plus years of service to Frankfurt Fire and Emergency Medical Services," September 8th, 98 to December 31st, 2012. Bill's actually been with us just at 15 years because we initially hired him as one of our part-time paramedics working in transport ambulance, and then he went through the process and became a sworn employee September of 98. So we hate to see you go, but we wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. I think the mayor has something for you.
I've got a little plaque for you, appreciation from the city. 19 years, 14 years and four months, and thank you very much for your service.
Thanks, Mayor.
Wish you well. Take care.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, in Planning and Building Codes, we have Gary Mueller to present Joe Morgan, retiring with 20-year service as Code Enforcement Inspector.
Joe has been a wonderful employee for the city. She's been here for 20 years. She started in finance and been with our department for nine years. I consider her a friend and colleague and truly enjoyed working with her, and we will miss her quite a bit. Robbie, this is her immediate supervisor, wants to say a few words, and then we have a plaque that we'd like to give her as well.
I just want to thank Joe for the great job she has done. She's, she was one of the first one that I had back there, and we've had some adventures together. And so I just want to thank her for all of that, and it's bittersweet because she reached a milestone in her career, and she's going to be leaving, and I wish her the best. And I just want her to know, though, that we're going to miss her back there.
So our plaque for her is called the Loyalty Award. It's presented to Joe Morgan. For your well-deserved retirement, your friends from the Planning and Building Codes Department sincerely appreciate the 20 years of professional daily effort, commitment, and loyalty you have provided our department, city, and citizens of Frankfurt, Kentucky. We congratulate you on your retirement.
Now, Joe, I want to give you a plaque here from the City of Frankfurt, appreciation of your service for your 20 years. And I know the job that you've had. You get out in a lot of controversies, and things that you do is code enforcement. But I also know that in my point about the community, I've heard excellent reports on you, and so we're going to miss you.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the community. I'd like to thank my coworkers, past employees that I've worked with. You guys have a great bunch of people. And I'm just really glad that I got the opportunity to serve the City of Frankfurt citizens. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, Chief, we have 2.2 check presentation.
Jason Milton of Golden Living Center and Fire Chief Wallace Posage. If you'd come to the podium, please. And Chief Posage, tell us a little bit about this presentation.
Jason contacted me about a month ago. I'm not sure what your position is with Golden Living.
As missions and marketing.
As missions and marketing. We have a very close working relationship with Golden Living Center. Our crews are out there on patient calls several times every week, and we're very happy to have the relationship we do with that facility. Anyway, Jason contacted me about wanting to make a donation to the Fire Department for whatever we may need. So I'm going to let you take it from here, and then I'll speak after that.
I just wanted to thank you all for letting us present this today, for all the Frankfurt Fire and EMS, all their hard work and dedication. Like he said, you know, we work very closely with them on a, you know, regular basis. We can't say enough, you know, for all their hard work and their dedication. I do have a check I'd like, if anybody wants to get a picture, it's an oversized check. If I'd like to get that, my coworkers and I and Chief, if we could get a picture.
Eddie, you got your camera? All right. Yeah, we can step up here if you don't mind.
Yes, I can step to the front there.
They have a paper? Does Eddie have one?
Eddie's got one.
That is a big check, that's it.
Probably work better. Oh, yes, it probably, we'll probably cash this one a little easier. But we do appreciate it, and for the Commissioners that didn't see the front of the check, it's for $1,000, and we will put that to use toward unbudgeted items this year. So thanks again, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
The next item on the agenda is Citizens' Comments section. And the way we operate Citizens' Comments, since this is a special meeting, any citizen comment addresses items on the agenda. And we request anyone who wants to come to speak on the agenda, they may do so. We request that they come to the microphone over here and attempt to limit your comments to five minutes. Identify yourself when you come to the microphone. Any citizen comments?
My name is Debbie Bramlich. I'm a resident of Frankfurt, and I simply want to comment on item 4.4 on your agenda. And just, I encourage you to go ahead and vote this into law so that in the future, employees who report items, matters of safety issues, dishonesty, whatever, in the workplace will not be the victims of a witch hunt. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Any other citizen comment at this time?
I may get seated before I get started because they're not really on the agenda, but there are a few of us here.
Your name, who is?
Oh, my name is Joy Jeffries. Thank you, Mayor Graham. I would just, there are a few of us here that would just like to express our gratitude for your six years of service, Mayor Graham. And we are very, very thankful that you've been in the life of the Frankfurt City and in our lives, and we appreciate everything that you've done for the last six years. I know at your age, you didn't have to do this, and it was a gift to the city, and we thank you very much.
That was so nice of you. I bet you had a lot of faces out there. I wonder what you're here for. Oh, yes.
I'd like to say I'm in the same age group as you.
And what's your name, Mayor?
Barbara Olds-Lightest.
Thanks.
I first met you in 1951, when my husband introduced us, and I have admired you, been behind you in everything that you've done, supported you, and I am so proud of you. And I know this last four years has been stressful and trying, and I want to commend you for your patience, your coaching, your teaching, and you have so many wonderful attributes. And I, as an old friend and an old person who wants to stand up for you and let people know, you are one of the finest people I've ever had the pleasure of knowing. Thank you, Mayor Graham.
I'm Dr. Scott Green, and I just hate to see these people say all these nice things about my friend. I'm afraid his head might get that big. I've known Gippy since high school. He was a senior and I was a freshman. And he asked me to be his campaign manager when he ran for representative, and I didn't automatically say yes, and it kind of surprised him because he thought I'd just say yes. And I said, no. And I was asleep. I was in bed asleep, 10 o'clock at night, he called me. And I said, well, I answered 10 questions real quick, and I'll tell you why I didn't do it tonight. And he did. But I said, I don't know why you want to do it. Have no idea why you want to do it. Don't do it. No, I'm going to do it. And I said, okay, I'll help you. And the one thing that we said that we would do or not do, we would definitely not run a negative campaign. That was the first thing that I, question I asked him. So Gippy has been one that has served all his life, and he has been willing to serve all his life. He's served in the Air Force, he's served as a coach, he's served as a teacher, like you mentioned. Then he served as a representative. That's why I don't know. And then he came up, he said, I'd like to be mayor. And I said, why? And he said, I want to serve. And he has served all his life, and we're thankful for it.
It was nice of you. Appreciate that. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, it's a minute. All right, listen, move on, and thank you. I do appreciate all the comments made this morning, from the bottom of my heart, I really do. Thank you very much. The next is for ordinances, and I'll turn it over to our solicitor who's sitting today, sitting in for Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor, the first ordinance is an Ordinance Amending, Ordinance Number 19, 2012 Series, appropriating the revenue to be received by the City of Frankfurt for the fiscal year 2012 and 2013. This ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt budget for fiscal year 2012, 2013 to include health care costs to fund the wellness program and add health care coverage for employees working spouses. Additionally, the amendment provides funding for the infill of the East Frankfurt Pool.
Okay, do I have a motion concerning the approval of ordinance 4.1? Commissioner May, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Mr. Haddon, any comments? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.1 is adopted.
Mr. Mayor, the next ordinance is ordinance 4.2, an Ordinance Amending, Section 100.01 of the City Code of Ordinants Concerning Abandoned Urban Property.
All right, a motion pertaining to...
It's this summer.
This amendment to Section 100.01 provides for the updating of the list of abandoned urban properties after any appeals have been heard, for notice to the property owner by first-class mail, and by posting the property on the city's website, for removal from the abandoned urban properties list of properties that have been repaired, rehabilitated, remediated prior to May 1, and for extending the date of filing an appeal to May 31st.
All right, we have a motion pertaining to ordinance 4.2.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Mr. Wilder, second. Commissioner May, any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.2 is approved.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance 4.3 is an ordinance concerning fitness for duty requirements for safety employees. This ordinance implements a fit-for-duty program which will allow safety employees to establish the required level of fitness through the job-related physical agility test for the fit-for-duty program in order to provide further incentive to safety employees to maintain fitness standards.
All right, do I have a motion for ordinance 4.3? Mr. Haddon, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Wilder, any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes, and I hope other departments can soon follow.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.3 is adopted.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance 4.4 is an ordinance providing protection for employees reporting wrongdoing. This ordinance prohibits the City of Frankfurt from sanctioning or penalizing employees reporting wrongdoing in the operations of the City of Frankfurt, and authorizes the filing of an action to enjoin such sanction or penalty and to recover damages if appropriate.
All right, do I have a motion regarding...
Move to approve, Mayor. Move to approve.
And a motion for approval. Commissioner Wilder, give a second.
Mr. Haddon?
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.4. Continue.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance 4.5 is an ordinance amending sections 39.04, 39.07, 39.12, 39.16, 39.17, 39.20, and 39.21 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. This ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ethics by making technical clarifications, adding a definition of department head, requiring department heads to file statements of financial interest, changing the date for the filing of statements of financial interest to February 28th of each year, increasing the number of members of the Board of Ethics to five, allowing an ethics complaint to be filed with the chairperson of the Board of Ethics, and stating that requests for advisory opinions and the opinions themselves shall be public documents unless otherwise provided by the state Open Records Act.
Okay, this has been the first reading. Without any objection, we will accept the first reading of ordinance 4.5. All right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda are orders, there being none. Next on the agenda are resolutions, there being none. And then we have the next item, the consent calendar, to recognize our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. 7.1 is an item to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between HCC Life Insurance Company and the City of Frankfurt. HCC Life Insurance provides stop-loss insurance for the self-insured group health insurance plan. This coverage will limit city health claims exposure to $75,000 per insured and $3.9 million aggregate deductible. Wells Fargo is our broker, and they sought the bids, and after negotiations, HCC had the best final proposal. Financial analysis is approximately $600,000 depending on employee census, health plan participation, and medical claims. 7.2 is to authorize the filing of an application for the 2012-2013 Kentucky League of City Safety and Liability Grant Funds and designating the mayor to execute all grant documents pertaining to this application. This grant requires a 50-50 match, and the city can be reimbursed up to $3,000. The Public Works Streets Department and Public Works has applied for funding for training and equipment such as signage and barrels to alert the public to possible work areas on this grant. 7.3 is to authorize a contract award with Transit Wash Bay Design and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. The purpose of this item is to award Transit Wash Bay Design Phase 1 Contract for Transit to QK4 Architecture, Engineering, and Planning once approval from the state has been obtained. The Office of Transportation Delivery has given initial approval for the city awarding the contract to QK4. These grant funds are available through a 5309 Capital Transit Grant to cover the cost, which is $31,500, and funds will be spent from our transportation improvement account and then reimbursed with the grants. 7.4 is to authorize approval of Amendment 5 to the engineering contract with GRW Engineers for the design of the new pump station along the 421 corridor to replace the industrial park pump station, and for the mayor to sign all documents related to the project. In February 2006, excuse me, a contract was entered into with GRW Engineers to prepare a feasibility study and master plan for addressing the sewers along the US 421 corridor. Amendment 5 covers additional fees incurred by contractor delay. This amendment will be reimbursed by the contractor through liquidated damages. The amendment number 5 is in the amount of $45,909, and the total contract is $706,755.05. 7.5 is to approve change order number 2 for the rehabilitation of approximately 4,500 feet of gravity sewer main and 30 manholes in the Myrtle Avenue Sewer Phase 2 project, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the change order. The field conditions of the pipe in the Myrtle Avenue area were found to be in a different alignment than what was drawn on the as-built drawings for that area. This led to various changes for the contractor on the construction plans. Change order number 2 covers all the changes that have been found at this point. The amount of change order number 2 is $175,145, and this total contract is $882,161. 7.6 is to authorize Amendment Number 5 for professional services contract with Jacobs Engineering, AKA Jordan Jones &amp; Goulding, for design of the Two Creeks Sewer Collection System and Pump Station, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the amendment. A contract for preliminary design evaluation was awarded to J.J.G. in June of 2008. This amendment number 5 is for additional costs associated with design and survey costs with changes in design location along with the addition of a sewer line for replacement. The total additional cost associated with this amendment number 5 will be $39,809, and the total contract for this project is $440,154. And that concludes the consent agenda. Oh, do I keep going with personnel? I'm sorry, I'm a little slow here. 7.7 is personnel. First is promotion of Thomas H. Bradley and Public Works Department from Deputy Director Public Works to Public Works Director, Professional Engineer. Congratulations, Tom. Retirement of Joe Morgan, Code Enforcement Inspector, authorized payment for accrued leave, and the retirement of William D. Sutton from Fire and EMS, authorized payment for accrued leave. And now that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion pertaining to acceptance of the permit. Commissioner May, approval, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Haddon, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so the consent counter is adopted. Next, our board appointments. I have two appointments to recommend to the commission. One is for the Board of Ethics, the appointment of Joni Napier-Crowe for a term ending on Then one for Code Enforcement Board for the appointment of Louis E. McLean for a term ending 3/22/15. We've had the resumes available to us for a number of days. Do I have a motion pertaining to these?
Sir, Mayor, I move that we appoint Joni Napier-Crowe to the Board of Ethics for a term ending 12/31/15.
Okay, we, okay, we have, you have a second. Mr. May has a second. Okay, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so Joni Napier-Crowe is being appointed to the Board of Ethics. The next one for the Code Enforcement Board, Louis E. McLean. Do I have a motion pertaining to this claim? Commissioner May, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Haddon, discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
No.
Commissioner Haddon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so Mr. McLean is approved for the Code Enforcement Board. Next on the, is open business chief.
Under 9.1 is to authorize the acceptance of the 2011-2012 Annual Audit for the City of Frankfurt as prepared by Mountjoy Chilton-Medley LLP. Financial analysis, funding in the, well, background is the 2011-2012 Annual Audit has been completed and was presented to the Board at the 11/26/12 Commission meeting. Funding in the amount of $19,999 is allocated in the General Fund, and $10,000 is allocated in the sewer account for a total payment of Mountjoy, Chilton, and Medley of $29,990.
Okay, do I have a motion pertaining to approval of 9.1? Commissioner May, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I've got a question, if there's a representative from the, from Mountjoy-Chilton-Medley here. Is there not? Well, then Steve might be able to answer, our Finance Director might be able to answer the question.
You want Steve to come through?
I suppose so. I'm just curious to know if the, if Mountjoy-Chilton-Medley ever actually saw a breakdown of the justification for the sewer fund transfer. I know that we transferred $300,000 from the sewer fund into the general fund. That... we transferred $300,000 from the sewer fund into the General Fund. That, that's only legal if we're able to justify administrative expenses out of the General Fund that support the sewer department, as in that's only, it's not legal to just take money from the sewer department. We can only transfer those funds if it's a reimbursement, legitimate expenses. I, I'm just, I'm just curious to know if the, if the justification for that reimbursement was ever provided to the, to the auditor's office.
Yes, I provided that information to, well, when we first started making the transfer, I provided that information to, I think it was Mitchell that was doing the audit at that time. They saw it, and basically what happens after the audit is complete, and they forward their work papers on to Mountjoy. So when Mountjoy began doing their audit work, they saw the work papers from Mitchell.
Okay.
So they should have that, and I'll, after this meeting, I'll confirm to make sure they've got that.
This is something I kind of, I kind of take for granted. I mean, $300,000 is obviously a very clean number, a very big round number. I've, I've always just assumed, and I assume you can confirm, that, that when you make an effort to tally the administrative expenses on the city side, that that number, and I realize that there's some given that number, I guess I just take it for granted that number is higher than 300,000, and that you're, you know, playing it safe by kind of rounding down. Is that fair to say?
It's, it's pretty close. I went back and looked at it. I think you brought this up maybe last year. You were asking me to see if there's any way we could find some more.
Get closer to the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I went back and looked at it, and it was, it was pretty close. I think it's around 14, 15% of our workforce is, is sewer workforce. And what I did is I tallied the common cost between general administrative and sewer, and about 14% of that number was 300,000. So it came back almost pretty close. So that's why I didn't make any adjustments after that point, because it was so close. But it almost surprisingly came back to the number.
Okay. I mean, as long, as long as the auditors saw
Yeah, there's justification.
that breakdown, then I'm comfortable. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I've got. I mean, I guess I will just note one more time for the record that this audit does confirm that the city's reserves grew by about $70,000 over the year in question, which is great news for the city. Thank you.
Any more comments? All right, please call and roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so 9.1 is approved. Next, is, do you need more old business?
We can't bring up anything off the agenda anyway.
I just wanted to, I'm gonna ask that every time. Okay, now New Business Chief.
10.1, to authorize the mayor to sign a contractor agreement between FEBCO Incorporated and the City of Frankfurt. FEBCO provides a third-party administrator services for the flexible benefit plan for city employees, and this contract includes provisions, again, offering health reimbursement accounts. This agreement will start, with FEBCO spells out responsibilities of both the city and FEBCO for the administration of the flexible benefit plan. This is, under the plan, employees can have pre-tax dollars withheld from their paychecks and deposit it into medical or dependent care spending accounts. FEBCO maintains the accounts, handles reimbursements, and assists employees with claims. Administrative cost under this contract is $5.50 per participating employee per month plus $30 per month. This agreement is for one calendar year period beginning January 1, 2013.
Okay, do I have a motion pertaining to 10.1?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder, second?
I'll second.
Talk it up. Okay, Commissioner May, any discussion? Or please call and roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so 10.1 is approved. Any more new business? Okay, now we're down to, next to the last item on the agenda. And at our last meeting, the commission asked that, at the close of this meeting, that all the commissioners have a chance to make some comments. So we want to honor that at this time, and I'll start here to my right and just go right down the line and make comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the opportunity to, to make some closing remarks here at my very last meeting. You know, I ran for office four years ago for a number of reasons. I ran in part just because I wanted to be able to vote for a real person instead of a polished politician. I ran because I wanted to get things done with a heart full of hope and energy and fresh ideas and just eager to, to get to work and make a difference. I did not run because I wanted a political career, and the plan from the very beginning, and I've always been perfectly upfront about this, the plan from the very beginning was to get in, only tell the truth, always do what's right, completely ignore the political consequences, and just let the chips fall where they may. That's exactly what I did, and I don't have any regrets about doing that. I knew that wasn't a recipe for lasting political success, and that was still an easy choice to make because life is simply too short and too precious to compromise my values and turn a blind eye to some of the things I saw in order to win reelection. It has been an honor to serve my hometown, and I especially value many of the friends that I made along the way. I've done my best to be firm but fair and to always consider the long-term consequences of our decisions. And I, I understand that not everyone sees the wisdom in investing in Frankfurt's future when times are hard enough right here and right now. I understand that. But I'm leaving my post secure in my faith that Frankfurt's best days are ahead of her, and I'd like to think that many of the seeds we planted this term will play a part in that. And I'm proud of the seeds we planted this term. We raised the city's reserves for two years in a row. We ushered in a new era of transparency in our local government. We changed the way our entire community thinks about waste. We finally got serious about addressing Frankfurt's longstanding stormwater problems. We made tough decisions. We made strategic, sustainable investments in Frankfurt's future, and we refuse to kick any cans down the road to future generations. And I wish we had done more. I really do. I really wanted to build new sidewalks on major streets that don't have any, that need them. I really wanted us to save more money by using energy more efficiently. I wanted to facilitate more public art. I wanted to do a lot of things that I never got around to because I could never, because I got stuck on my efforts to bring more accountability and transparency to City Hall. And I realize that I've earned a reputation as a firebrand over the last few years, and that I've even burned people in this room. We've butted heads, Mayor, but I hope you understand that I don't take it personally, and I hope you don't either. For what it's worth, despite my serious objections to some of the actions and inactions that I've seen here, I don't harbor any personal feelings against any of the city officials who I tried to hold to account. I recognize that we all have our reasons for doing the things we've done, and I expect that we all believe in our own reasons. We're all human, and that's part of the problem because it's hard to hold people accountable when you know them personally and when you understand the consequences to their lives. I remember coming home from this very commission meeting two years ago, from our last meeting of the, the term, and sitting down in my kitchen and crying, just sobbing, the night I voted to fire a former city manager for ethics violations. And I know we did the right thing, and I'd do it again, but I still cried for hurting his family and for hurting his heart as a father. My point is that I take the personal consequences of our decisions very seriously, but I also take our responsibility to the public trust even more seriously. And I've spent my political career, some people would even say I've thrown it away, trying to wake people up and shine a light on some of the things that happened here in City Hall. How do I put this nicely? City Hall is full of good people. Good people who justify and turn a blind eye to staggering acts of corruption. I believe that our system is crooked, and there are very few people who are willing to do anything about it because those of us who do stand up and speak out are targeted and silenced while higher-ranking city officials are allowed to get away with acts ranging from abuses of power to whistleblower harassment to witness intimidation, covering up fraud, to just plain classic old-fashioned dishonesty. It's... I do appreciate Commissioner Turner, who couldn't be here today, for standing with me, for standing against me, I mean, for standing with me against a lot of this stuff. But as far as I'm concerned, the rest of us have allowed this corruption to flourish unchecked for the last couple of years. And as proud as I am of the many things we've done, I'm afraid that's also part of our legacy to the city, a shameful part. And before the folks watching at home start judging anyone sitting up here, I hope you understand that we, the public, have allowed this to happen. There's this general feeling that the city would be better off if we didn't air its dirty laundry in public. We just cover it up and deal with it behind the scenes, and nobody wants to hear about this stuff. I recognize that what I'm saying is distasteful. I think the entire subject is distasteful. I'm not aware of any tasteful way to address it. One thing I know for certain is when we hide everything behind the scenes and let it sit in the dark, then the dirty laundry doesn't get cleaned. It doesn't get addressed. It just sits there and collects mold. There's no value in making City Hall look good if the insides are allowed to rot. And we, we all, as a society, fail the whole candidates accountable when they mislead us. And so it should be no surprise that our representatives are also willing to turn a blind eye to similar abuses within our local government. A democracy reflects the values of its constituents, for better or for worse. And so I ask you, the folks sitting at home and watching this right now, I ask you, what does the state of City Hall say about us as a city? What does it say about us as a community? And is there anybody out there who's willing to do anything about it? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Appreciate it.
I would just like to say, I think both of you very much, for the last two years, conversations and discipleship, helping me, I guess, get off my training wheels when it comes to how government works. Took many political science classes, but political science classes and actually being an elected official are two different things. And I just want to thank both of you for the time we've had.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to say thank you. I'll start with Michael, who's not here. I had the great fortune to go to school with his mother, so it was very meaningful to watch Michael grow up and be someone who wanted to give back to his community. And it was, it was sort of a, a nice legacy for his mother to, to raise such a fine person as Michael and watch him grow up. And to, to Linda and her husband who, who raised Michael, special thanks to them. I know that Michael would love to be here today if he could, to be here for his last meeting. But I want to thank him for his service and for Solis Wilder, or Commissioner Wilder, I'm sorry, I was supposed to refer to his name, but had the opportunity to watch him grow up, not from when he was young, but I guess from colleagues' days and shooting his movie around town and how fascinating that was to get to watch the process of, of he and his crews be out in the city to do the filming at night and, and get those, I guess, really cool, cool shots of action. It was, it was something to watch. And then to, to turn around and a few years later, get to serve with, with him on the commission. And I know his, his commitment to this community is unwavering, and he'll, he'll continue, I'm sure, to, to give back to the community in, in some way. He has a wonderful, beautiful family. I know his mother is here today to support, to support him, and we appreciate that. And looking forward to your future accomplishments. I hope things go well in the film career. I know from a creative standpoint how, how it is to try to have a, it's that left brain and right brain thing, trying to have the creative side of your brain working and having to try to work within the parameters of government. I have that same, same problem sometime. It gets to be an interesting dichotomy to try to figure that out. But I, I do appreciate your, your diligence and on the issues that you create, and you worked harder than I think I've seen anyone that I've served with work. Thank you. To, to try to, to bring those issues forward. And you have a lot of accomplishments, and so does Michael that you all can be proud of. And I think that we'll continue, you'll see us continue on the energy side of things. I think you'll see the commission continue on sidewalks for neighborhoods. I think those are important, important issues, and a lot of the other issues that you all have talked about. I think you'll see those continue to be issues that will be addressed by the commission. So we thank you for that and wish you well with your family and whatever life has for you on the next horizon as we, as we all move forward. And Mayor Graham, thank you for your continued service with this community. I've, I've known you for many, many years, had the opportunity to work with you when you were in the legislature, and to watch your commitment to this community and your never-ending efforts to get legislation passed to help this community. And you have a, a great legacy that will continue to benefit this community, and, and all the, the great things that you did for us when you were state representative continue to, to bearing fruit to this, bear fruit for this community. And your last four years as, as mayor, we appreciate the sacrifice that you made when, when you could have easily just gone on and, and done other things and had less stress in your life. But we all chose to, to serve our community, and we've all dealt with stress, stressful issues, and we couldn't do all this without working with each other. And sometimes when we disagree, we still, I, I believe everyone still is, is going to be friends afterwards. I know that's, that's, that's my feeling. And to our wonderful staff, I, I know how much they've helped us all be able to make all these accomplishments become realities. So we thank you all. And Mayor, with that, I thank you so much.
Okay, is that my time? Thank you. Thank you for the comments y'all made. I appreciate it. I get a chance to air your feelings, and everyone is, is have that right to air their feelings. We all don't have the same perspective, but we have a right to express our personal opinions. In 14 days, I'll be out of here, and as I have looked at my life, I've sort of lived it in, in various phases, and I will be completing the seventh phase of my life at this four-year period. I looked, my first phase of my life was going to elementary school in Thornhill, high school, Peach Mill, I mean, Elkhorn, no, I went to Peach Mill one day. Then I got kicked out with Elkhorn. But nevertheless, the Elkhorn and, and then working a year at Old Grand Ed's Distillery, then going to college. So by the time I got to college, I was 23 years old. So I sort of looked at that in my life, as I looked back on my life, that was my first phase. Then I have a four-year block that I served in the military. Then I was 12 years in public education, 18 years in state government, five years I worked in the communities of volunteer, and then four years now. So this is my seventh phase of my life completed. And I've learned lessons in all of those, and I have tried to apply those lessons that I've learned in those various things in every position that I fill. So what I consider, you know, is I see the right to do. And in this position here, I, I want to, I'd be so grateful that I had a chance to serve as mayor of this city. When I was getting Thornhill, Thornhill wasn't part of the city. Thornhill didn't become part of the city next.
Thornhill didn't come part of the city in the next, mid-1950s. So if I had continued in Thornhill, I'd never been mayor. I'd never been mayor. So nevertheless, as I want to comment on some people I've worked with, I've worked with commissioners, I tell you all, and I appreciate all of you too. But up here, normally Rob sits down in my extreme left and I have appreciated Rob more so much. He has given us what I think, options in a fair way, let us make decisions. And then Mona, bless her heart, she's always, she has more balls than the Erica in the balance and she works hard at that and I've appreciated that. And in this four-year time, I have served with three city managers, Tony Messy, Free Bruins, and now Chief Waterlord. I can only say that from my personal perspective, that I have found them all to be honorable men and that I have appreciated working with them and I thank them for, for the contributions. The staff in City Hall, I appreciate you. I've spent quite a bit of time down here. I know the mayor is a part-time, but just as I was in the general assembly, my life was such that I could devote a full-time effort to that. And so I spend hours down here. I have lots of conversations with people in City Hall and I've found City Hall people to be quality people. And I get down in the community on a regular basis and out of the community, I hear lots of positive reports about city employees, the sewer department, street crew. All everyone tells me that, boy, you got good city employees. So that's, that's pleasing. I had nothing to do with that. They were hired when I got here, but it makes me feel good. The department heads, bless your heart, when the first budget we had to make, we had to make the budget balance, we had to cut back to over a million dollars. And y'all went in and you cut your budgets, things of that nature. I know it wasn't easy. You get up, quit most things, but I thank you for what you did on those things. And then, I can't forget this, I want to thank the citizens of this community who agree to serve on boards and committees. You know, we don't have those, they get no pay but with very few acceptance. Some of them, I think, get $25 a month or something like that, but if we're being, but you know, you, you have to have those citizens and so I'm grateful for that. And I'm, I'm grateful for other, excuse me, I'm grateful for other groups in, in our community that has makes our city what it is. And you know, I look down here and I say, Joy Tourism, they do all those kind of things. The Chamber, got you down here? Yeah, all kinds of things. I serve on the Chamber board because of title and I go to meetings and I see the people in that chamber.